I'd like to call this committee, the whole meeting, to order. Today is Thursday, February the 8th of 2024. I'll start off by the Atlantic acknowledgement. I'd like to begin by acknowledging that we're meeting on the traditional lands of Acadia First Nation, part of Mi'kmaq, the ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people. Item number three, additions or deletions to the agenda as circulated. Is there any additions? If not, then entertain a motion to approve the agenda circulated. Moved by Consular Daniel Allen. Do I have a seconder? Seconded by Consular Sherry Hurlbert. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item five, if there's any declarations of conflict interest, please notify me and I'll make sure that your name is recorded. Item number six, presentations. We have with us today, I believe it's Erin Camo from the Western Counties Regional Library. So I'm going to ask you to hit the red button on your microphone. I'll turn your mic on.
Okay.
You may get started.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Because I can't hear myself. I woke up this morning with an ear that's blocked, so I do apologize if I speak too loudly. I was invited to come here today because at our December board meeting, we had a meeting in regards to just sort of discussing what our budget will be for next year. And a bit of background is that we have been trying to, with our funding the way that it is, we had been trying to give our -- that's someone from work calling. I'm going to hang up on him. I know where he is, but anyway. The reason why I'm basically that I'm here today is because last year, our board had to approve a deficit budget in order to be able to provide better wages for the staff. So we historically have provided low wages just as a result of our funding and how it's been structured decades back. We historically budgeted lower wages and were never able to keep up, to catch up. But we all know that in the last few years, the cost of living has increased significantly. And as a result of that, we felt the need to actually bump up the wages to a more reasonable wage, not yet a living wage, but closer to it. And as a result of that, it actually puts us in a deficit position in next year's, for next year's operating year. And so what I did to, so we did put a request into the provincial government for a 5% increase in bridge funding. And then we also, the board decided in December to put in a request to all municipal units within the Western Counties Regional Library zone for 5% as well. And then from there, so once I sent the letter, Victoria reached out to me and asked if I could come and present, just to talk about the funding situation that we find ourselves in, and also to give you an opportunity to ask questions related to funding or services in general. So that's what I'll do. What I did is, not realizing that there would be an audience, hello there, I did not, I just presented a document, so I will actually follow this document, which you all have as well. And it was very much focused on not necessarily library services. You do have an annual report, and I do believe that you circulated the document about general services. But it's just sort of going through sort of the history in the last decade or so of funding, so that you get a greater understanding of why we find ourselves in the position that we're in. So to get started, if you just, you can follow along with the document in paper copy or however, I'll just kind of scroll for the benefit of the audience. So Western Counties Regional Library Services, it, we serve the tri-counties. So we have 10 branches, and they, they actually, we have a branch in Westport, which you have to hop an island to get to, get to two islands, to, so from Westport to Lockport. And the way that the region was developed was that it was started with a small handful of municipalities that formed a small region, and then as time went on, other municipal units and town units joined. So by the 70s, all 11 municipal units within our area had joined the regional library system. So when I talk about library services, I tend to focus on the regional services because they are intertwined. And as people travel more and they're not, it's not necessarily that each, each library operates in silos and only serves sort of the people within, say, the municipality or the town. So, but at any time, if you have questions related to this area, I can perhaps speak to that as well. So we have 10 library branches. We have one headquarters. We do offer outreach services to seniors, also a borrow-by-mail service, which is available to everyone in the, in the region. Digital library services, if you are a library user, you may be familiar with eBooks, audiobooks, that type of thing that are downloadable. And, and I did add the equity, diversity, inclusion, and accessibility piece in there because we're in the past, life was pretty straightforward in terms of our jobs. Like we had, we, we only looked at sort of like doing things a certain way. And now that we, we find ourselves in 2023, we're actually looking at providing better services for everyone in the community. And so I wanted to put that in there. Our funding formula prior to 2020 was solely population-based, and the, they actually were using the population from 2017 up until the Funding Formula review. And it was frozen between 2014 and 2020. I am not doing my job very well. There we go. So I wanted to give you a general picture of what that meant in terms of our regional budget. And the Funding Formula is shared. It's still the same structure, but 71% is, funding is provided by the province, 26% is provided by the municipalities. And we actually, as a board, have to fundraise 3% of our operating budget. So for the year, this is just a breakdown, and I had put that in there because, again, one of the main reasons why I'm here is because we did approve a deficit budget to be able to provide better wages for the staff. So I wanted to give you a picture of what the wage increases were historically, and just to note how we actually increased the wages this year. So historically, we provided wage increases, and the way that we did it was we typically tried to be in line with the, tried to be in line with the provincial wage increases or, you know, what was going on around us with our funders. And, but with having frozen funding for such a long time, we fell behind on our services and our wages and pretty much everything, because every year we had to cut somewhere in order to be able to provide, eke out a bit of wages, wage increases on the other side. So that's kind of to give you the picture of where that is, and also where the municipality of Yarmouth falls within there. So from there, during that time, and it won't show up on the screen, but I'll try to scroll through it. So during that time, between 2013 to 2020, before we received our, before we started operating on the new Funding Formula, what we did in order to provide extra wages and continue to operate at a relatively sort of stable, sustainable, I guess, way, is that gradually we eliminated full-time and part-time positions within the region, so it never actually impacted one, one branch, greatly impacted a branch. We wanted to kind of make sure that any cut that was made was kind of cut throughout the region. We reduced the hours for part-time positions. We reduced library service hours gradually. Every time the budget rolled around and we had to, we had to increase our wages. I did provide a visual as to what that meant within the region as a whole. So the blue semicircles are full, current full-time employees. The blue circles are current, sorry, semicircles is part-time, circles is full-time, and then the squares are casuals. And then the gray zones are the positions that were eliminated gradually throughout the decade or so. So then we go to our current Funding Formula. And so we had a Funding Formula review in 2019, and that, we worked with, with the province, and there were some stakeholders, and I will be very upfront, is that one of the things that they did not do well, and that they're looking at doing much better this time, is they did not involve the municipal, the municipalities in the discussions. And that was one of the, the feedback that we received, or the government received, because they are the ones that actually will review the funding. We're part of the review, but in terms of the stakeholders, you know, knowing that municipalities pretty much make up 26% of our funding, that is a major stakeholder that they just did not communicate very well with during the review. So during this Funding Formula review, we did identify that a solely population-based funding was just not sustainable. So we, they re, I guess rejigged the Funding Formula so that it was, they considered the population, but there was also some consideration for base staffing and scalable staff, as well as a base for per capita operating costs, the same as anyone else's sort of the insurances, the just administrative, operating side of things, technology, all of that. But that the base staffing and the per capita operating costs were not prescriptive, because they didn't feel they had a great handle on how actually each, every region developed independently of each other. So the way that we do things are not exactly the same as the way that, say, Annapolis would. So they couldn't really prescribe a funding to that level, because everyone evolved a little differently. And then what they did is, the funding, it actually helped us with our funding, but it, it ended up being, we had already fallen behind, so they, yes, more money was given to libraries, but then it was frozen for another five years. So that's what brings us to this current situation, is that we haven't had an increase in funding, we will not have had one in five years, and our costs have increased significantly in these last, especially in these last five years. So the Funding Formula, I did give you a graph there, so that you could see what we provided in terms of wage increases throughout this five-year period, and also to note where we received our funding during that time. And so I do want to note, and since, was it the same council in 2021 that's here today? Yeah, okay. So I do want to thank you upfront, because in 2021, we did actually request that, that municipalities consider to give us the increase in the funding a year ahead of the, of the time where you were required to do so. And this municipality did actually grant that request. And I have never had a chance to thank you in person. I've thanked Patty a number of times, but, but not you all, so thank you for that. You were one of the few, and it really did have an impact on the staff, but as well as, as our budget. So the impact of funding is pretty straightforward, is that our wages continue to be low, we rely heavily on part-time workforce, we have difficulty recruiting and retaining staff, and it's an unsustainable model, is basically at the end of the day. So what we're going to be doing, the short-term solutions, is that we dip into our reserve funds to be able to continue to fund the wages that we, that we currently are at, and to hopefully provide another increase next year, to request bridge funding from the province and the municipalities, and then to work with the province and the municipalities on a Funding Formula review, which is scheduled for this spring. And our long-term solutions to sustainable funding is to contribute to the Library Funding Formula review again, invite municipal input on library funding review and review process, and then help develop a Funding Formula that supports sustainable regional library service. That was a lot to, to give you in terms of information in 10 or so minutes, but I welcome any questions that you may have.
I do have one question.
Yes.
To start off. This Funding Request that, that's been asked of council, has that been made to all the other funding municipalities?
Yes. So what we did is, we took the current Funding Formula, and there is a per-unit cost that is cost, that is part of the formula. So we just, we just put a 5% increase on that. So each municipal unit is, their 5% is based on their current contributions, so that...
Okay. From my understanding from your presentation, that, that the request that you made in 2021, not all municipalities moved forward with that?
Yes, because it is a request, so it's not a requirement.
Yeah, okay.
And in 2021, what happened was that the, the Funding Formula had been implemented, but the municipalities had not received the one-year notice for the change. And so that, there was a one-year gap, and where we were looking at wanting to be able to get all the funding within that five-year period, we did make the request to the municipalities if they were willing to give that extra funding for that one-year gap. And I believe four agreed to it. And you were one of them.
Any questions of counselors? Counselor Lauren Cushing? No, Counselor Sherry Hurlbert was first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for coming in to present to us today. I appreciate that. When I look at the picture of the frozen, the semicircles, half, half-circles, circles, squares, have you increased any staff since 2020 that, like some, it looks like some of those have disappeared?
Yeah.
Right? So have, have you been able to bring on more staff since 2020? It's stayed the status quo, no new people?
No new people.
No new positions, I guess, no new positions?
No new positions. What you don't see there is that there are some part-time positions that their hours were decreased.
Okay.
So there's, it was really difficult to be able to put that in a chart without getting into too much of the, but what would happen is that we would, depending on where services were cut, sometimes we had to cut some hours. It was never to a person. It was usually when the position became vacant, we would review that position, and that's where the, the cuts were made.
Okay.
Yeah. Not many, though, between 20 and 2025.
Okay.
2024.
And I'm glad that as a council, we were able to provide that additional funding, you know, a couple of years ago. I just want to thank you for the work that you do and all of your staff do. By looking at this chart, it's, for me, it's disheartening. I'm an avid library user, and I know that there are many people in our communities who depend on the library for a lot of things. And, you know, during COVID, I think that was, you know, extremely valuable service, where you could have books delivered to you, and like, it wasn't necessarily seamless, but it was a great way to still continue to provide those services. And I think, you know, continuing those things have, have been important. So anything, like during our budget, you know, discussions, we'll see where things go, but I, I see the value in libraries and, you know, yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, thank you.
And it's like I was saying to Victoria, I think it was last week, this, I, I welcome the opportunity to present. If anything, this is a chance to start the discussion, and then to have you all kind of get a better understanding of where we are at now, because there will be more discussions related to funding sort of soon, in the future, and...
Thanks, Erin.
You're welcome.
Counselor Lauren Cushing.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. What do you consider as a, a living wage?
We, well, we look at the policy report for living wages in Nova Scotia, and I forget the name of the document right offhand, but we do look at what that report, that report comes out annually in September, and currently, the living wage in this area is a little over $25 an hour. Now, the, the wage that we were able to provide to, so rather than go through sort of like every single job and their wages, the frontline staff that work in the branches, those are the, the bulk of our staff. That, that's our, you'll find them everywhere in all of our branches. Their wages are currently, with that last increase that we gave them, is currently $18.75.
Eighteen.
Yeah.
Second question is, what type of fund, fundraising do you, does the library do?
Mm-hmm. We have a fundraiser every second year. It's called Adopt a Book, so that helps us immensely.
I participated in that before.
We have some investments where we do, that we use, that, that's a little different, but we have savings and investments that we use to purchase, I guess, bigger ticket items, like vehicles and things like that. We have ongoing book sales. This sounds very, it sounds like we have bake sales, but we have ongoing book sales. You'd be surprised how much money that makes. And we do actually have fees that basically come in for certain services, like printing costs and things like that. We don't charge for, for our programs or any of our book loaning, but we do actually generate a little bit of income with the printing service and the faxing service and things like that.
I got you. I lost my train of thought there, but, okay. So your Adopt a Book program, I participated in that before, and, and I thought it was interesting, right? So are you looking at any other type of fun, way to create some income?
We, we, yeah, we do try. What happens is, well, we all know that people are struggling right now, and asking people and even businesses for money is very difficult at this point in time. So as long as it's, it's legislated for us to have to, it's, it's basically, we have to fundraise 3% of our operating budget. We will continue to do that. We will do the best that we can, but we also acknowledge that there's only so much that we can ask community to give money to a library service. So we, we do continue to fundraise. People are very generous in donating when they can, and we do get donations throughout the year. But in terms of major fundraisers, we're finding that a lot of where we were getting our money was from businesses and sponsorships. It's no longer there, because they're all struggling and everybody's asking for money. But since you mentioned adopt, since I mentioned Adopt a Book, and you mentioned that you knew about it, there's a plug that we do have another campaign coming up this September.
Does, did you, have you found that online, people read, is that, is that become an increase, or?
Online use?
Online use, yeah.
For, for...
For the library?
For reading and stuff?
Yeah.
So our digital library came onboard, like, we launched it in 2010, and there was a steady increase in use, and then it plateaued. It seems like those people who like to read on a device, like to read on a device, but the, the majority of people still prefer the paper, and some will use both. I personally do not read on my device, but, I'm old school. But I think that the expectation at that time was that books would no longer be necessary, and we're actually finding the opposite. We're finding that people want materials in multiple formats, and a lot of them still want them in, in a book, paper, copy format. And actually, the publishing industry hasn't suffered at all. They're thriving.
Good. Thank you. Deputy Warden?
Thank you. I just, just a little bit of the math on the, I guess, increases in funding, you know, provincial, municipal, and, and, provincial and municipal, and, and actually, the municipal contribution's up about 20% over 10 years, which is a long time. And the provincial amount, because of that big step, which was good at the time, certainly, is up about 23%. So initially, I thought it was probably like really a, a, a lack of funding from the province, but I do understand that they haven't increased it for a, a long, long time. I guess the bigger issue is, is that we're all faced and will be facing budget time, is we've had like a tremendous amount of inflation relative to what was there before. I guess historically, it's...
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's maybe not unheard of, but it's, it's, it's pretty tough to, for, for everybody to swallow individuals and, and, you know, municipalities and, and libraries and all that type of thing. So I, I guess, I hear you, and I know that there are pressures, pressures on you, and we'll have, have to discuss this further, for sure. But I understand that it's, you're in a tight spot.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more? Any more questions, staff? Well, I guess that's it. Thank you very much for coming in.
Anytime.
And there is a request coming up on the agenda. I think it's the next item.
All right. And if, it's like that, if there are any follow-up questions, just let me know, and I'm only down the road, if you ever need me to come back.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, Erin. Item seven, correspondence for action, 7.1.1, the Western Counties Regional Library request. You all have that in your package? What is the council's pleasure? Counselor Patty Durkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I saved my comments for our actual discussion about what we're going to do. Erin mentioned that everything was frozen from 2014 to 2020, so it, it took a huge, a lot of work on behalf of boards across the province, actually, to work with the province to, to update any of the funding. In general, like, from being on the board, I can see that library staff are paid very poorly, and when you consider that people go to university to try, to get a degree in library science, and then they go to the libraries, and some of them are just slightly over minimum wage, they have big loans to pay back, so it's, it's sad, actually. And I can tell you that throughout communities, culture, and heritage, the province's wages are considerably low, which is sad, because it doesn't attract a lot of people to go into those jobs anymore, because why would they? It's difficult, it's been difficult for them to keep staff. I know that they had to change a whole part-time program because people were coming and going. And I don't think that's very good for our community when, when there are big staff changes. So when you think about what's happened in the past three years in particular because of COVID, and the changes that had to be made in the library, and in general, the changes that are being made to library sciences, because it's not the same, when I think about the Halifax Library and all the additional programs that they've added to get youth in particular and seniors in there so that they have activities to do, our library is really, really important, and it continues to be so. It's important particularly for seniors and social programs, so it's like a community center for us. So that being said, I'd like to recommend that, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend to regular council, that the municipality of the District of Yarmouth make an increase in funding for one year, the requested 5%, which I believe is in the amount of $4,000, and that we advocate with the other units in the area on behalf of the library to the province for additional funding. And so the amount needs to be determined of where in the budget it would come from.
Okay, a motion on the floor. Do I have a seconder? Seconded by Consular Allen. Discussion on that motion? I have something on my tip of my tongue, but I don't know really how to put it out. So the motion that's on the floor is to increase the Funding Request for, for the next fiscal year, for one year?
Yes. In the meantime, we try to advocate all the units on behalf of our library for increased funding from the province.
Okay. Deputy Warden?
I, I understand, I don't know if it, it says for one year, but I, I would assume that that increases it next year and then in subsequent years, unless we're, unless we, unless by motion we change the, the amount. Just, just for greater clarity's sake, we're, we're not increasing it for just one year. We're increasing it moving forward, I would expect, or we're increasing it for the next fiscal, I guess. Is that it?
CEO?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I think what I understood Consular Durkey to say is, there's an immediate need for response now, and so council can determine what they want to do with that $4,000, 5% now, and work with the other units to lobby and advocate with the province on the, the whole funding issue, and make a go-forward determination after those conversations are held. That's how I understand the recommendation.
And that's how I understood the recommendation as well. It's not to continue on year after year after year, it's just, just one year. Okay, is there any more discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. And one thing I forgot to mention at the start of the meeting was, Consular Nick Hilton is absent with regrets. All right, item 7.2, we have one piece of correspondence for information from the Yarmouth County Hospice Society Grant Report. Item number eight, 8.1, the Rural Internet Project Update. It's a request from the November Council. Madam CEO?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So late last fall, I advised council that we had received official notice that the rural internet projects were slipping in terms of timeline, and it, they would not be complete by December of 2023 as per the kind of original project timeline. And so council are interested in just receiving periodic updates as we move through 2024 towards completion by December 2024. So from the Build Nova Scotia website and this... and this aligns, I think, with the testimony that was given to the Public Accounts Committee yesterday by the CEO of Develop Build Nova Scotia, sorry, it looks like so all of our original projects were completed, but then we've had some scope expansion. So we've been able to add additional civic addresses to the project and leverage the funding formula that's in place. So over the winter, Carleton has been largely completed. They've there are 10 civic addresses remaining, according to the website. There's a scope expansion in several areas around Yarmouth that are going to be completed somewhere between June of 2024 and December of 2024. There's a significant expansion in in communities include with 10 postal codes and include places everywhere from Sydney to the Digby Necken Islands to Yarmouth. So for the District of Yarmouth, it's going to include people in communities, for example, like Sanford, Short Beach, Port Maitland, some additional work happening along the District of Yarmouth, District of Argyle Line, Brazil Lake, Brenton. So I think what's happening is there are some gaps that are identified, and the residents have been able to prove that they're underserved, and so there's still money available. And so between the province and the proponents, they're spending the money and trying to connect as many as many homes as possible. So I think our next big milestone will be June, and then after that, what's being publicly said for completion dates is December. And so it's really around those small pockets of expansion. There is a fairly significant project for North Chicagoan, and that's looking like that's going to be in July. And as far as I know, the planned work for Greenville is done. So if there are still gaps in Greenville, we do need to take a look at those and see if we can support those.
Deputy Warden?
Yeah, just a quick question. Doctors Drive, which I I happen to live on, I'm assuming that will be complete by sometime before June 24, correct? Is that what I'm hearing?
It is specifically listed in one of these communities somewhere. I'm not sure if it's a June or a December. I will find it for you, Deputy Warden.
Perfect. Thank you.
Counselor Daniel Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I you I know you purposely mentioned the Greenville area because we we have two houses for sure there that seem to be having zero luck getting getting any type of internet other than other than satellite. So you say underserviced. So if, I mean, I guess you can get satellite anywhere. So what determines underserviced? Because, you know, we have two houses in Greenville for sure that aren't but are being told to use satellite. So why are they different from someone else? And I know and I know Counselor Herbert, I have someone that mentioned to me they live on Sunday Lake, and they're wondering, they had asked me one day about if I had heard anything about internet coming their way as well, because there's a there's a I don't know how many civic addresses are on the Sunday Lake Drive.
Yep.
But there's a few there as well. Is there a map that that people can go to look at or I can go to look at?
There is. Yep, we'll publish the link again. So there's actually a page on the Build Nova Scotia website where you can put your community name in as well as the first three digits of the area code, sorry, postal code, and it brings up all the projects in that catchment area. So you can search by Sunday Lake and then add the B5A or or whatever it is and see what pops up. So I we will I'll circulate that to council again, and we'll also promote it through our communication channels again. Now, when it, the way I understand the terms and conditions for the funding is, if if a civic address is not scheduled to receive a fiber optic connection, and they've been provided with the information to use a satellite connection, there has to be proof that the satellite won't send and receive a signal in order to trigger a qualification as underserved and take a look at a fiber optic connection. So I'm in regular contact with one of those two homeowners that you referenced, and they they qualify for the satellite service, and they don't want to pay the monthly cost of it, because it is can be more expensive than a fiber optic connection. So, you know, we can have follow-on conversations about what does it what does it look like. Our project manager at Bell is well aware of those two civic addresses in particular. And so, you know, our hope is is that as we get past June and moving into December, if it looks like there's resources, could we have the conversation?
Okay. Thank you.
Any more comments? Seeing none. Item 8.2.
Hit it at the last second. I apologize. I had to pop out for a second. Yeah, the the cat ferry issue, I asked that be put on the agenda. And, I mean, I'll I'll move that we we write, move to regular council that we write Minister of Public Works and our M L A just voicing our pleasure about the about the increase in the length of the season.
Okay, a motion on the floor. Do I have a second or second by Counselor Lauren Cushing? Discussion on that? I I will say this much. I'm glad to see that that there's going to be an increased schedule. And we all know that the cat does have its shortcomings in regards to transportation of of goods and transport trucks, but it is what it is. And at least I'm glad to see that they're moving forward with an increased schedule. It's something that we worked so hard for when we lost it. Counselor Durkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Deputy Warden. I was at a YASTA meeting yesterday, and we were presented with some numbers particularly related to the cat. And, you know, considering all the things that happened in the past three years, we went through COVID, we've had issues with CBSA, and they're requesting more and more attention. That's the customs. They want more things, and and we've accommodated them. The fact that in 2022, we still had the, oh, gosh, what was the name of it? Were the form that people still had to fill out with regards to COVID, that's done. And then this year, we had issues with floods and fires, and that made it the news in the States, et cetera, and in in other parts of Canada. And when people heard that, they were afraid to come. They thought that, you know, our air quality would be bad, et cetera. I've heard that in a few cases. So so considering those things, we did really well last year, and the numbers reflect that. And more importantly, it's not just about the subsidy, and that's what people focus on, the subsidy, the subsidy. In fact, I'd love to know how much the other ferries in 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 the Atlantic provinces are subsidized, because no one seems to talk about that. But it's more about the economic impact that it has on our area, the number of hotels, the number of businesses, the number of jobs, and how much money people leave behind. And what it what the information showed is that when people come to Nova Scotia across the ferry, they stay longer, they stay roughly eight days, and they spend about $2,500 while they're here. So when that when you look at close to 40,000 people, that adds up to a lot of money. So it's really positive. And I know that there is an economic study being done now, and our executive director, Neil, has already been contacted, and they're looking for this past season and the upcoming season to see how it's affected our community. Thank you.
Counselor Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, no, it's definitely great for the community. Counselor Durkey mentioned the 40,000 people. Is do you know, like, is that the number that I don't want to go by, I'm going to mix this up, heads and beds, but is that the actual number of people that traveled the cat ferry?
48 would change, something like that.
Because I know between that and the ferry from Digby, which which last summer, just just from experience from picking people up and dropping people off, was packed, like, full. So, you know, just our area, the the ferries are just another link to get us to get people here. And, yeah, really important to this area. And I know I know that this is about the cat, but we definitely cannot forget about the the one in Digby as well. We can't afford to lose either one, which we fought for as far as the one in Digby when they were looking at relocating it for a little while. But, you know, it just shows how important it is for this area. It's probably the it's the second biggest, as far as I'm concerned. I don't know statistics for sure, but I would say tourism is our second biggest moneymaker in southwest Nova Scotia. If I'm wrong, I will eat my words, but I'm pretty sure next to the fisheries, it's tourism. So, thank you.
Any more discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. All right, item number nine, new business, 9.1, the Draft Capital Investment Plan. We have with us today Mr. Greg Shay and Mr. Danny Jackson. You have the floor, Greg. As soon as you're ready.
Okay, thank you, Warden and Council, and good afternoon, everyone. Today, we're going to take a quick walk through our capital investment plan for the next two years, and hopefully come to some agreement on a move-forward plan. But before we get into the numbers a little bit, there's just a few comments I want to make, just to put it in some context and some things to keep in mind as we go walk through the numbers. So we're going to focus, I'm not sure what you've been given for handouts or worksheets, but we're going to focus on the first two columns of our capital investment plan worksheet, which are headed capital reserves and gas tax funds, formerly gas tax funds. Today, they're called the Community Canada Community Building Fund, but gas tax funds essentially, because they are the funds that are concentrated on our investments and our wholly owned assets. There are a couple of exceptions to investments we make that are not wholly owned, but I'll point those those out as we go through the document. So important things to remember that in most cases, these numbers are estimates, and they were derived from quotes. They were derived from engineers' calculations, which they they like to call opinions of probable cost. And in some cases, they're derived from internal best estimates and from they're based on past history and experience. Some of the line items are born of discussions and requests from staff and recommendations based on more mundane operational matters, just to maintain service service delivery or to meet end-of-life requirements in some assets. And some of the assets are born from discussions and deliberations from council yourselves, who are trying to execute on your strategic plans and your initiatives. These are budget estimates. The the amounts that you see slotted in this worksheet for budget are just being massaged now as we speak or as we continue to build our own operating budget for '24, '25. So again, they're estimates based on historical trending and how we funded our reserve levels in the past, but the final allotments will ultimately be influenced by the complete budget picture when it's put together, the operating budget, and other decisions around funding sources, which can include partnering other grant programs or even debenturing in some cases if the need is there. So today, the objective, I think, is just to reach some final decision on the funding, well, is to reach the final decision of this roster of projects and to agree to agree in principle, at least, that this is where we want to go in terms of capital investment and the projects you've slated for the next couple of years. The funding mix, again, needs to be finalized with other than the operating budget, but will allow us to work on finding the funding solutions, number one. And number two, it'll allow us to work start work doing some early work on some necessary steps that are largely in the design stage of some of these projects, because that is a necessary step before we can go to procurement and tender. Just a reminder, we are guided by our procurement policy when we make purchases. So we have that, and it's always been practice of councils. Two, before, and major projects that go to more complex procurement, such as a tender or RFP, it's been the practice of council to review the tenders and make a final decision before any awards are made. And I will say that we have Danny Jackson beside me this afternoon. Danny is our Director of Capital Projects, and he's our champion for our asset management initiative. So Danny is here to support just in case there's some questions that become more technical nature on the projects themselves. And finally, I will say that I think in your documents attached is an infographic that's been prepared by staff. All right. So I just want to say that it's a high-level doc, it's a high-level document of our CIP that provides a bit of information about the planned value over the five years. I'll say it just describes how some of the projects align with your strat plan. And it just has some other information information pieces in there, but it's not intended to be all inclusive or exhaustive, or it's certainly not the definitive guiding document in your five-year plan. So we'll just continue with that background and that context. On the investment plan we have for 2024, 2025, I'll just walk down through the projects. We have a standard line item for sewer system upgrades, and there's often CapEx every year involved with that, with build-outs and renewals of pumps and motors and SCADA and equipment like that. That's slated at $75,000. We would like to do a study on sea level rise, particularly around the Cape Fear Schu area, which is slated for it's earmarked at 100,000. That's not been tendered yet or RFPed, so we're not sure where that will come in. We've allowed 250,000 this year for some infrastructure work on the Hebrun Dayton Sewer System if it's necessary, which still depends on some more engineering study and analysis of I and I studies that have been done. There's two big items that deal with fitting up these buildings for accessibility as mandated by legislation. That's the Rotary Center up at the Rec Center and this administration building. There is $1.45 million slated for those two projects. There are upgrades to the driveway system at the Hebrun Rec Center, 100,000. We see one of the development vehicles coming to end of life. We've slated 60,000 for that. There is a commitment to the Mariner Center project, and that's one of these items where it's not directly owned. It's a regional asset that's only partially owned, but we funded out of capital reserves. So it's on this, and it's a $750,000 allotment this year we've made to continue to work towards a global commitment that we've made for that project. So small item for installing new LED streetlights, which happens every year. Rural broadband is another one of those items that's not our asset, but we've made a commitment and partnered with Bell and the province to for the rural brand rural broadband reachout. And that's a $279,000 item that hopefully will finalize our commitment on that project. The Nova West Business Park buildout is it's a $9 million project, but it's intended to be spread out over several years, and we'd hope to invest a million and a half this year on punching into that park and making some more lots available for the commercial sector, who is demanding that type of space and that type of development Some wayfinding will be done, designed and done, hopefully to take us out to help tourists and others find their way to 304 in Cape Fear Schu. It's a small item, but it's on there, 4,000. There is some more outdoor, some small outdoor lighting and signage work we want to do at the Hebrun Rec Center for safety reasons and for finding our way around up there, 10,000. There is also two studies we want to do, one regarding the Port Maitland Sewage Treatment Plant and greenhouse gas reduction opportunities there. Energy is an expensive thing, and we need to do our work to to try to be net net zero over the years. And so we want to spend some money, $25,000, we've allotted for a study on that. And also, in the terms of renewable energy and economic opportunities, is a solar farm opportunity possible. We want to explore that a little bit with the private sector and with the province. We've allotted 25,000 for that. We do need in-house, we need some upgrades to our asset or IT infrastructure. We allotted $31,000 for server upgrades. And a couple of other items there that are not specifically out of capital reserves, so I'm not going to raise them. But that's the plan for '24, '25. It's it's 6.114 million dollars is what's kind of the 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 global number right now that's estimated to be to be. And that's '24, '25. '25, '26, we continue on with, again, sewer work. That is an ongoing item when you have sewer infrastructure in four different districts within our municipality. We would like to do some more work on exploring the opportunities with the province on developing 101 Greenfield Interchange to help facilitate economic development in our park in particular. It's a $22,000 investment that we think will be cost shared with the Transportation Department. One of your one of your initiatives and exciting projects is the Lake Milo Act of Transportation Act of Transportation Trail. It's a significant project and involves multiple partners. The Order of multiple partners. The order of magnitude of that budget is in the seven-plus million-dollar range, but we have slighted a little over $637,000 in '25, '26, to start doing some of that work spread over possibly a three- or four-year period. And then there's the Active Transportation Trail on Highway Three that's been recognized in some of your strat plan work and active transportation work. That, again, is a multi-partner project. Order of magnitude budgeting for that is like 1.5 plus, and we've earmarked $918,000 for a portion of that, that project, if it were to go ahead. Again, a small, small item slotted in for LED streetlights. Again, an asset that's a regional asset that we don't own directly, the Mariner Center, another $750,000 to bring us closer to our commitment on that. Again, Hebrun Dayton Sewer System, these are still pending, you know, final studies and analysis of engineering results of the work that was done there earlier on that underground system, but we've allotted another quarter of a million in case that's necessary to do some more infrastructure improvements. The Cape For Shu Master Plan is another item that's on your, on your long-term strat plan. I do think it's important to do the climate sea level rise study to see what the implications are for the built assets out there and the ground assets. But in any event, we do have a strat plan, parking lot redevelopment, and some other things planned for '25, '26 of $436,000. We would continue on with the development of the Nova West Business Park. It's somewhat contingent on the success of the development of the first page, phase, but assuming that was, you know, successful, we would carry on with another $3 million investment in the business park development. Back to some more mundane, but necessary tax for service delivery is the Port Maitland Sewers Treatment Plan is coming up on the point of its life where it needs some significant work on its building envelope. We've allowed $15,000 from reserve repairs there. And the Public Works, there's a Public Works wastewater truck that we see as being necessary to service our different districts coming up. That's $100,000 allotted for that. And the last thing on the capital investment list for '25, '26 is, again, to continue finishing the driveway upgrades at the Hebrun Rec Park. We tried to spread that out over two years. It may or may not take two years, but another $50,000 been allotted for that. So, the total budgeted, estimated amount forecast for capital investment in '25, '26 is $6.896 million. So, that's the plan. That's what I was asked to present today. It is in principle. There are, these are estimates. And so, that's, that's what we heard from council deliberation discussion and staff discussion, and from trying to meet the targets in some of the strat plans, our strat plan, the pillars in the plan, and also some necessary investments in infrastructure and, and equipment that's needed so we can continue to deliver services.
Deputy Warden, Trevor Cunningham.
Thank you for the presentation, and, you know, we've spent a lot of time, staff and council over the years, you know, looking at projects and seeing how, how these capital dollars, including gas tax, can be, can be spent, you know, for the, for the betterment of our community, growth of our community, and it is, these are really important projects to keep our community growing, keep our population growing, and, you know, increase our revenues moving forward and quality of life and all that type of thing. So, thank you very much for all the hard work, and I'll move acceptance of the capital investment plan is circulated.
You recommend it into regular counsel?
Recommend it to regular counsel, yeah.
Motion on the floor. Do I have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Lauren Klishing. Discussion, Counselor Patty Durkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've thought about this very carefully, and I, and there's some concerns that I have that I, hopefully you can answer, and if not, we may have to, I may make a motion further to table this. The $3 million, you've got a $9 million project at the Nova West Business Park. What I would like to know is, and I think everybody, what, what would happen with that $3 million? And what, in the short term, what would that give back to the municipality if, once that work was done?
Well, the $3 million would buy development of sites that are build-ready. It would build infrastructure, road infrastructure, and water and sewer infrastructure. Danny would know more of the details of the, what the engineers have decided, you know, have built from their studies on that site, about the groundwork that's needed, the earthworks that's required, the lot development that's necessary, and again, the road and mostly, it's mostly road and sewer and water infrastructure that would be required. That hopefully would provide some marketable lots that we could meet some demand on that is coming from the commercial and industrial sectors for development. And, you know, there's, and we would hopefully be successful in selling those lots, which would bring, you know, more commercial taxable assessment to the community, more jobs. That's the whole idea of it, is to continue to build momentum, momentum and, you know, built environment that the commercial and industrial space can use to bring, bring in more work and more jobs and more taxable assessment. So, I'd suggest we do it in stages. It's a big, it's a big item for sure, but the cost of business today is driving that, and the site itself is driving that as well. So, that's, that's, these numbers are, again, they're engineers' best estimates. We won't know real costs until we put it to market, of course.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Greg, if I may. So, that $3 million would be for next year, oh, I know, thank you. My question was, do we have people inquiring in our business park at the moment? Like, do we have people waiting to get in there if we have?
As far as I know, there's, we get queries a lot for park space, for warehouse space, for building space. I wouldn't say we have a waiting list, because the business community doesn't wait. If it doesn't exist, they're going to look somewhere else and go on. They can't wait for, they can't wait around for us to develop lots. And it's been, it's been a persistent problem, actually, since I've been here. And so, what I think, the approach has been, the approach now is to begin to try to, to be more proactive than reactive and get the, get the site developed and set up and ready. So, it's, so someone that's looking for whatever acreage of lot that's serviced, we can really offer it to them and say, instead of saying, well, coming soon, which we don't know what coming soon means, and they're not going to wait for a coming soon answer. So, I can't say that we have a waiting list of people that's going to line up and put deposit down on acreage, but I can say we fielded several queries in the past years, and in recent years as well, from the private sector looking for commercial space.
Okay, thanks, Greg. And I just have one more question. The $100,000 for the sea level rise, I'm just wondering if there's already lots of information out there that we could access that would tell us about what's happening with the sea level rise, rather than us having to spend $100,000 on that?
It's a good, good question, and I can't answer that. We could do some more research to see if the data is there. This number is based on some research that's going on from some other areas right now. Climate, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's the flavor of the day, quite frankly, sea level rise study.
Yes.
But having said that, it's important for us in the coastal communities to know what we're up against with the rising sea level that we're getting. Whether or not there's already data that exists that could help us in answering the question, I frankly can't answer right now, but we could certainly investigate it to see if we can avoid that cost.
Okay, yeah, that would be my recommendation, that we try to find that out before we commit.
I believe the CAO could answer a little bit more to that as well. Go ahead.
Yeah, so it's a great question. So, in the last couple of years, there was a project undertaken in Yarmouth County to try and map a little bit on where we would expect certain types of storms and, and the rise and the surf and the impact, how far inland it would reach. And so, we do have a little bit of mapping for that particular area of the municipality. What we don't understand is, what are the erosion impacts going to be? How much land are we going to lose every time that happens? What are the consequences going to be on the infrastructure that is there now? So, we have some high-level information to understand better the wisdom behind continuing to make infrastructure investments at Cape For Shu. Council needs to understand more about what the erosion impacts are going to be, where at the site you can expect to see erosion, and at what speed.
Thank you.
Counselor Daniel Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, through you to, to, to Mr. Shea. So, I kind of had the same question as Counselor Durkey about the $3 million. I feel like we're very aggressive in our capital plan, but you mentioned about debentures earlier, which is similar to taking a loan out and spreading, spreading some money. So, that type of project, would, would that be something that would, you know, maybe we may be interested in doing that type of financial move for, so that instead of taking like a $3 million, I don't want to call it a hit, but making that $3 million investment for the next two or three years all at once is something that we could spread out over time to, to maybe free up some money to cover some of the other projects?
It is an aggressive plan, I'll say that. But I, and I do think there are, but I think, and there's some other funding opportunities, hopefully through some other granting processes and partnerships. And significantly, though, the debenture avenue is an avenue. It's one of the only long-term debt service, debt funding sources we have to work through the provincial Treasury Board on a debenture, debenture placement. And for something like that, it would make a lot of sense, because, given the long-term nature of the, of the asset and the size of, the size of bite that we're taking into a capital investment, it might make sense to do that and to amortize the cost of that over time through a debenture. So, I would certainly say we should be considering that. In fact, we will be considering that when we get to the final stages of our operating plans, to see what our budgetary ability is to, you know, to satisfy some of this capital investment demand, and how we can balance it all to make it work and be sustainable. I think debentures is a real possibility for projects of this size at this time, despite interest rates, which, you know, right now they're not optimum, but they're not as worse, they're not as bad as we've seen in the past, and I think they're going to soften. So, the timing might be right as well for, for seeking debenture if we, if we do end up going to market on this project and want to award it.
Okay. And this is, this is essentially a plan. This isn't anything that's written in stone that 100% is going to be done. Like, something may come back to council, because every time that, over a certain amount of money before we, we put it out, we have to, we have to approve it. And so, I mean, I know that this is a plan, but it's not something that's actually set right in stone as far as what we are going to be spending, correct?
That's correct. There's a procurement policy that guides that. There's your past practice of awarding major projects. There are the, I think there's a couple of commitments on here, like the Mariner Center and the Rural Broadband. You've already made those commitments in the past, but beyond that, it is a plan that still needs final approval before monies are actually spent.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Lauren Klishing.
Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thanks, Greg, for the information. Oh, excuse me. Presently, our available spaces at the business park now are all sold.
There's, I believe there's one lot left.
One lot left. So, in order for us to increase more business there, we're going to have to do the infrastructure. Number two, the number is high, certainly, but we have to have some numbers that we, that we can, that we can have, so when, when a project does come along, and some funding comes for that, we can apply that to it, and perhaps, instead of, you know, top, talking off the top of my head, maybe we only cost us a million and a half, we might be able to get the other million and a half for, from grants and stuff. So, all these numbers here are numbers, and plans can be made to be changed, that's what they're there for, but we have to have some numbers to work with. And if any type of funding stream comes up that can adapt to any one of these plans, then we can, then we can apply for it, correct? So, that's the reason why we have a plan. If we don't have a plan, we're running around. I can remember back when we had, we had to make some quick decisions on the, on the ferry terminal. We never had no big plan for it. Well, we knew we needed it, but we never had no plan for it, but then all of a sudden, we had to race around and get funding for it, and it happened. But this way here, we have something on paper. We have something that if, if a, if a funding formula comes up from other levels of government, or, you know, and maybe even the private industry, you know, we'll be, we'll have it there. So, that's the purpose of the plan. It doesn't mean that we're going to spend all that money right now. So, good, thank you.
Counselor Sherry Hurliver.
I think Lawrence Light's going to go back on in a minute.
Yeah, probably going to go back on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Greg and Danny, for your work and staff for the work on this. I had similar questions to a couple of counselors who've already spoken about the Cape For Shu sea level rise. I feel like we know it's rising, and do we need a study to tell us? And, you know, CAO did, you know, give us, you know, a broad level of why we're doing it, but I have some concerns over that one. And to Counselor Allen's point about Nova West Business Park, so if we approve, if we recommend to regular counsel to approve this, and staff, and we decide that we're going to go to a debenture, can, do we have to then re-approve this, or can we do the debenture without?
You're approving the plan in principle. What, what you would approve next would be a tender package that was delivered to us on request.
Okay.
For the buildout. We would present tender results to you to deliberate on.
And how we fund that would be decided then?
We would fund, we would probably have no idea how we want to fund it then. I mean, the debenture process happens, like I mentioned earlier, only two cycles a year. So, we would, we would time it to, and typically, you have to do your project before you can get the debenture funding. So, we will make our decisions on how we're going to finance it and fund it before we execute the project. We want to know how it's going to be paid for before we do it.
Okay.
The, the timing is a little bit different. Same as a grant program, if you were lucky enough to receive some grants, I mean, the timing of the grants, you know, would necessarily be different than the cash flow requirement to do the project.
Okay.
But we would know, I think it's important to know how we're going to fund these before we do them, and so we'd have to make those decisions ahead of time. You'd say, okay, we're, if we're going to, we're going to debenture this much money on this project, if we get it, if we, you know, if we want to proceed based on the tender results. And so, the tender results come in, you say, okay, we want to do this project because the price looks reasonable. Then we would have our, then we would know what we need to do next to fund it.
Okay.
Which would be through our reserves or through participating in the next round of debentures, basically.
Okay, that makes sense. And maybe through you, Mr. Chair, to the CAO, she can explain why we're, normally, we don't do our capital investment plan. At this time of the year, we wait, but maybe you could just give a brief overview of why we're doing it the way we are this year?
Sure. So, Mr. Chair, through you to counsel, one of the dynamics that, as a staff team, we've noted over the last five years in particular, is that the municipality of Yarmouth pays an opportunity cost for funding opportunities to do actual capital projects, because we haven't done the legwork in advance to understand the dynamic. So, for example, the Federation of Canadian Municipalities provides pretty significant support to municipalities who want to understand what are the climate impacts. So, are you trying to keep water clean? Are you trying to treat and dispose of municipal sewer more efficiently and more reliably? Are you trying to understand what the impact of sea level rise is going to be on an asset you own like Cape For Shu? And so, we approached council and talked about some of the opportunity costs we've been paying by not being able to do some of the work in advance. And so, this year, some of the permissions we're asking for are not actually to do projects. They're actually to design and understand what is involved in a project, so that we can leverage more funding opportunities from other pockets and reduce the burden on the municipality of Yarmouth.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And again, thanks for the work that you're doing to get our money where we think, it's aggressive. I, I will agree, it is aggressive. Thank you.
Counselor Klishing.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I know there was another topic I wanted to talk about, and that was the sea level rise. Coastal erosion, I forget what the name of it exactly was, but I said on that committee, I don't know if the province has approved that yet or not.
Coastal Protection Act?
Coastal Protection Act.
So, the, the act has been read, but the regulations aren't approved, so the act doesn't come into effect until the regulations are approved.
Yeah. Okay, that's what I, I didn't think it was approved yet. But this is the reason why, again, that $100,000 is, is put in there. So, if this comes about and there's funding for this study, then, you know, they'll know that we're, we're able to, to contribute some. We often mention, we're always mentioning the Cape For Shu area, however, that Cape For Shu area includes up along, you know, the, the Yarmouth Bar and whatnot, where there's, there's big problems there, which the coastal protection would come into, into play on that part. So, you know, so it's, it's, it's a, it's a big basket, but we have to have an opportunity to pick out of the basket what we need to do and how we get the funding. I think it's a great plan. Aggressive, sure, but it's not that we're going to spend the money now. People have got to understand that. Thank you.
Counselor Patty Durkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks again, Danny and Greg, and staff for putting this detailed budget together for us. Just a couple of things. One is, one of the issues always is if we don't do something now, then we know that prices keep going up, and that's the big concern, I think, for us, is that if we want to move forward with these things, the sooner the better. And second, who knows with the Coastal Protection Act, which is not about funding, it's about saying how far people can build and the restrictions that you would have with building in coastal areas. That being said, I know there is funds available through NSFM and other organizations to help with studies like that to make sure. So, I would hope that that would, we would look at that first before we, you know, decided how much we were going to spend. Thank you.
I'll just make one quick comment. As we all know, this is just a plan. It's been mentioned a few times before, but it's, this is just the plan that we're working with, and it's not the action. You've got to remember that each and every one of these things on our plan will be coming back to council for our approval on each separate item. So, if, say, for example, that we, the Hebron Business Park, staff will be coming back with us with some figures and stuff, and just because we are earmarking $3 million for that doesn't mean that's what we'll be putting out. There may be, as people said, there may be grants and stuff out there available. Hopefully, there will be lots of money out there, and we know there's lots of money out there. The feds and the province do have lots of money out there. But at the end of the day, any individual piece of this strategic plan will be coming back to council. So, if there's no more discussion on the motion on the floor, question being called. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Deputy Warden, could you take over the chair for the next portion of the meeting? I need to visit the restroom.
Well, thank you, counsel. I guess there's no questions for Danny. So, thank you again for supporting that plan and...
Thanks to both you and Danny. Excellent, and it was really good to have the conversation, certainly in the public view, and exciting plans, and I think we're all looking forward to having that document to guide us. So, thank you. So, on to item 9.2, Draft Council Code of Conduct Complaint Policy, C-284-24. Welcome, Ms. LeBlanc. And I'm assuming, Madam CAO, that Darlene will do the presentation, so. Okay, welcome. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. So, the first one you have there is the Council Code of Conduct Complaints Policy. As you'll see from the document in front of you, there's a cover note from the solicitor, and it explains that there's currently a council code of conduct in place, which I believe comes from the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities. However, it does not provide for how complaints would be investigated and dealt with. So, council had asked the solicitor to develop a draft policy to this effect, and that's what you have before you. So, this draft policy, it provides for, among other things, determining what is a valid complaint, a process for referring a complaint to an external investigator and the investigation itself, and how a report would be dealt with, an investigator's report would be dealt with by council. So, I'll just, I guess, open it up for any questions.
Questions from council? Questions or comments from council?
Counselor Hurlberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I should have made better notes when I was reading this over the weekend. There's some place in here, and I can't find it as I'm scrolling through, that talked about if the complaint was from a staff member and staff wasn't included, or it was, it said that if it was from a staff member or from a member of the public, do you know where that?
So, the word, Mr. Chair, the word "staff" is not in the policy, employee?
And we know this is a council, like, for council, for us.
That's right.
But when I was reading it, it led me to believe that there should have been, so if the complaint is coming from us against one of us, or from staff against one of us, or from the public against one of us, and I just want to make sure that that is clear. And...
Yeah, 4.1, Counsel Hurlberg, A.
4.1?
4.1, yep. Page 2.
Yep. By, or any, by council or any member of the public, right, that's where it is. But it, I think it should also include staff as well. So, it could be one of us complaining about one of us, the public complaining about one of us, or staff at the municipality complaining about one of us. So, that, I think, should be in there, right at the very beginning. And the other thing, we haven't made a motion, which we normally do, and I'm not willing to make one, so I'm going to turn off my mic.
Counselor Hurlberg.
Counsel Durkey, sorry.
She's looking at me like I'm going to, no. Okay, so, one of the concerns that I have about this is that it's, it says, "The clerk shall forward all complaints which comply to the CAO for determination as to whether the complaint is," et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I feel that this should go to the warden and not the CAO. I think if it's elected to elect it, if, I understand if the staff have a complaint, that it could go to the CAO, but I think otherwise, that it should be the warden that determines whether or not this complaint is valid, whether it should be determined to go on to investigation, et cetera. I don't feel that the CAO should have involvement in that.
Thank you, Counselor. Additional comments? Counselor Allen?
Well, just a quick note for Counselor Durkey, and I know it's not, but what if the complaint is about the warden?
Go with the deputy warden.
Okay. I just want to make sure, like, when, you know, that we include that as well, I guess, is, you know, if, you know where I was going, yeah. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, my understanding, there are some concerns, and it doesn't look like we've got a motion on the floor, or will have a motion on the floor perhaps, to move this forward. So, Madam CAO, would you go back and do some additional research and offer some suggestions with staff around some of the potential changes? Is that the move forward, or?
So, Mr. Chair, what I can do, because council asked the solicitor to support this work, and we did ask the solicitor to be here today, and unfortunately, he couldn't be here, I can pose those two questions in particular to the solicitor and get some feedback for council, and we can bring it back again until you're comfortable with it.
That makes sense. Thank you. Thank you. So, we're ready for the next item. Oh...
I was going to inquire, Mr. Chair, to the CAO, so would a motion to defer this to the next committee of the whole meeting in March, would that be in order?
Certainly.
It wouldn't hurt.
Yeah, it wouldn't hurt, yeah.
All right, then I still move.
Okay. Do you have a seconder? Got a seconder, Counsel Hurlberg, and they're both pointing their fingers in a good way. Usually politicians are pointing their finger, not in such a positive way, but we're all good around the table. So, we have a mover and a seconder. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, council, and I'll turn things back to our warden.
Thank you very much, Deputy Warden. As you can tell, I'm a creature of process, so. Moving on, item 9.3, Draft Private Road Right-of-Way Signs Policy Procedure, P-088-11.
So, the current policy sets out standards for private roads and right-of-way signage, excuse me, and staff is recommending removing reference to the committee and the program as they no longer exist. So, that would be 2.5 and 3.1. And we're also recommending removing Appendix C, which is the section from the LUV, because the policy itself refers to the LUV anyway. It's not really needed as an appendix. So, those are the recommended changes.
Counselor Sherry Hurlberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll make a motion to recommend to regular council the approval of the revised private road and right-of-way signs policy and procedure, P-088-11.
Okay, a motion on the floor. Do I have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Paddy Durkey. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item 9.4, Draft Low Income Policy, sorry, Draft Low Income Exemption Policy, L-068-09.
So, there's a couple of things with this policy. One is, in Section 2.3, we're recommending removing part of that section because it's not really how we apply the exemption. The exemption is applied to the bill, to the tax bill, regardless of who's on the deed or who makes the payment. So, for clarity, we're recommending removing that part of Section 2.3. And then the other change is, in Schedule A, we need to update it with the 2023 income threshold. So, those are the two changes to this policy.
Counselor Durkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Darlene. And so, I'll make a motion at the municipality of the District of Yarmouth, forward the Low Income Exemption Policy, L-068-09, to the regular council meeting for approval.
Okay, a motion on the floor. Do I have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Allen. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 9.5, Joining Communities in Bloom. Counselor Paddy Durkey, your mic is still on.
I'm on. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We've had presentations from Communities in Bloom in the past, and I know there are people in our communities who voluntarily would be willing to step up to the plate to help with the beautifications in our communities. And so, therefore, I'd like to make a motion that the municipality of the District of Yarmouth, that's referring to regular council for approval, join the Communities in Bloom. I think there would be a lot of benefit to setting up community organizations, and they would help do that. You'd also have access to help from Communities in Bloom, and that means that the, would, Communities in Bloom already exist in the town of Yarmouth, and they've been really successful in winning many awards for their community, and I think it would be great if we extended that to the municipality of the District of Yarmouth.
Okay, a motion on the floor. Do I have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Sherry Hurlberg. All right, discussion on the motion on the floor. Counselor Cunningham, sorry, Deputy Warden, Trevor Cunningham.
Yes, and so, I guess I, and it's been a bit since we saw the, we had the presentation, but I guess what we probably need at the council meeting would be some follow-up from staff in terms of, you know, cost, how Community in Bloom's would work in the municipality, that type of thing. It's just been a long time, so I think we need a little bit of background information brought to us at the meeting before we make any decision about, you know, joining Communities in Bloom.
I do have a couple of comments in that regard, and it's in regard to the municipality joining the Communities in Bloom. If I'm not mistaken, is not, and I don't know if any one of my colleagues out here can answer this question or not, is Communities in Bloom not a community-based organization, or is that an organization that the town of Yarmouth has, or? I do believe that it's a good project. I'm just unsure about the way that the motion currently sits, that I could approve it. I think it's a great idea that we want to improve our communities, but I also think that a lot of that comes from the community itself, whether it's different community groups around the municipality. So, and that's where I'm a little bit confused, so I don't know who could answer that question. Counselor Durkey, your mic is flashing. Maybe you can answer that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Communities in Bloom is an international program. It's around the world, and the town of Yarmouth just happens to be a member. So, we would become a member of Communities in Bloom, and then they would help establish groups of people that would work in our specific small communities, like Arcadia or Carlton or whatever, to, for beautification. And some of the things, the initiatives I know that they come up with is they'll, you know, they'll come up with initiative and suggest homeowners themselves do something to their property to fix it up. They have a lot of suggestions of how to make things better. What I do agree with, and I, since I made the motion, I would be happy to table that until we get the actual numbers and figure out where the budget would be. So, if we could, if I could table that until, make a motion to table to the next meeting, in the meantime, staff, ask staff to come back with the information that we need in terms of financial implications. I believe it was around $750. I may be mistaken.
Matter of process, she made a motion, you can't make a motion to table while there's a current motion on the floor, correct?
Oh, I think so. Yep, and I think it supersedes the motion that's on the floor.
Yeah, I don't have my cheat sheet, so if anyone's wondering why I look a little bit confused, there's just the order of motions that's got to go on.
Yep. So, to table or to refer. Yep.
Okay. So, that would supersede the motion that's currently on the floor?
Yep.
Okay, so you made a motion to defer until the next regular council meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay, a motion to defer, seconded by Counselor Daniel Allen. Is that debatable? I don't have my cheat sheet with me.
Yes, it is. It's debatable.
No, I'm just trying to make sure. Debatable and it's not...
May be debated, but only as to the time. So, it's going to be tabled, but is March okay, or should it be April? That's all.
Yeah, but that's only majority vote, correct?
So, it may be debated, but only as to the time.
Yeah, okay.
March.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor to defer. Just making sure of the process in regards to motions. I don't have my cheat sheet, as I said before. It was moved by Counselor Paddy Durkey, and seconded by Counselor Daniel Allen. So, is there any discussion on that? Counselor Paddy Durkey, you still had the floor. Deputy?
Uh-huh.
Counselor Sherry Hurlberg, you have the floor.
And I had my mic on to, not even about that, but I'm going to say this first. It says, Communities in Bloom website says, "Since 1995, over 900 municipalities have participated in Communities in Bloom annually at provincial, national, and international levels." So, that kind of tells us that other municipalities are doing that. So, for clarity, because I think I heard Counselor Durkey say one thing and the warden say another, so we are deferring this not to the next regular council, but to the next committee of the whole in March? Is that?
Correct.
That's correct? Because that's not what, I don't think that's what I heard from one of the two. You said next, Counselor Durkey said next, and then the...
He said regular.
Right. But it's not regular...
I was the one that misspoke. I was the one that said regular.
Okay. So, for process, it is for the next committee of the whole, for us to see the numbers and then have a discussion and then figure out how to move forward, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and I promise mine won't be very confusing. Counselor Durkey may know this. Have we had interest groups within our communities who would like to become part of Communities in Bloom? Have we had people come approach you or someone else saying that we should do this? We've had that?
Actually, I can say that I have had one community group out in my area that's asked about that, about making a garden.
Yep. And I figured it was, you know, I kind of knew it was, but I just wanted to make sure that we all knew that, yes, people in our communities are, are asking for this. Thank you.
Okay, any more discussion on the motion to defer? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carried unanimously.
Mr. Chair, could we have a motion to direct staff to do the research, please?
Yeah, so, so what I'm going to need now is a motion to direct staff to do the research in regards to Communities in Bloom and the cost.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Patty Durkey. Do I have a second or? Seconded by Counselor Daniel Allen. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. I guess I better read up on my cheat sheet on motions and their priorities. Moving on, item 9.6, presentation, request for presentation, or it says, Presentation from Property Valuation Services, Counselor Lauren Cushing and Counselor Patty Durkey. You both had asked to have this on the floor. I don't know whose mic went first. Counselor Patty Durkey, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know there's been a lot of questions from the community about the most recent assessments that have come forth. I also know that the assessments are based on the previous year, and we all know that there have been changes in real estate situation in, in Yarmouth. I really feel that I would like to make a motion to request that we have Property Valuation Services come and speak at a committee of the whole meeting to present why and how they arrive at the numbers that they do. I know there are instances where people live right next door to each other with similar houses, and one is getting much higher assessment than the other, and I feel that there has to be some clear understanding of why that's happening. What I do know is that when one house has the cap and one house doesn't, even though they're similar, when the cap comes off, it is not on the home, that home is going to be assessed at a higher number. What I also want to mention is that the, that assessment isn't the same as taxes. If you have a $9,000 increase in your assessment, doesn't mean you're going to pay that amount in taxes, which I think there's some confusion going around about that. But the best people to speak to us would be the Property Valuation Services. Okay.
No, I was just looking for something else.
Okay, just didn't want to interrupt anything. In addition to that, yes, we don't know what's going to happen in the future. We don't know what's going to happen in 2024, if the numbers are going to level off, are they going to stay the same, are they going to go down? And I know that property is valued based on what happens in the real estate market. So the best people to come and explain that to us and the public would be PVSC.
Thank you very much, Counselor. I just had a question, CEO, about another thing that's coming up on the agenda, so sorry to interrupt you. Counselor Lauren Cushing.
Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Before I give you the floor, did you make the motion, Counselor Durkey? Okay, I didn't get a second or for that. Okay, seconded by Counselor Lauren Cushing. My apologies for that.
No, it's fine. I just kept talking.
Okay, Counselor Cushing, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And Counselor Durkey is, has hit the nail on the head for sure. A question came to me from one of my local residents, and the question was asked to me, he says, "My assessment went up, and I'm going to have to pay an extra $1,200 for my taxes. What are you going to do with it? How are you going to spend that money?" And I really couldn't tell him. I just said, "Well, you know, we have some, we have some expenses that we have no control of, such as RCMP, schools, health services, and other things that we just have no control of it, right? But just getting, just to keep it brief, I totally support what Counselor Durkey was saying, that we need to have Property Valuation Services come here and explain things to us, into the public, just so they'll know what's going on." Thank you.
Counselor Sherry Hurlberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll support the motion, but I, and I also want to just make sure people know that the deadline for appeal is today, is it not? Yes, so even though they will be coming at a future date, if anybody needs to make an appeal, it needs to be before the end of the day today, I think. Yes.
To our recording secretary, it was Counselor Lauren Cushing that seconded the motion that Counselor Durkey had made, so my apologies for that. And my next question in regards to the motion that's on the floor, which I fully support, typically our committee of the whole meetings are 10-minute presentations and 10-minute counselor questions. That's typically how they are, but I got a suspicion that there may be a lot more information that could come from the Property Valuation Services. So I know we have a council procedural policy, but it would be in councils' pleasure to extend that maybe to 20 minutes for, for the presentation, because that very well could take a lot longer. It's just from previous experience from, if I remember correctly, it's been many years since I've seen them in here in that regards, and a lot of you are new. So just, just be aware that, that, that present, day of presentations may only be one. Deputy Warden?
Yeah, it may also be useful to, you know, when we ask them to attend, perhaps the CEO can, and I'm sure she, she will, in any event, you know, put forward some of those questions, like what are the projections moving forward? What do they think the real estate piece is going to look like? They may not know, but, you know, all those, all those pieces that, you know, she would think that should be in, the questions that we'd have essentially, we've talked about a little bit, and, and that could be part of the presentation.
Yeah, I just don't want us to be rushed, or put me in a position where we should rush because there is probably going, there, I know there's going to be a lot of information, a lot of questions. Okay, any more discussion on the motion on the floor? Question being called. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. All right. Item number 10, Public Comments, a brand-new section, which I'm pleased to say the councils moved forward that we're going to allow this. So I'd just like to remind everyone of some of the main points of the resolution that was made and passed at our last regular council meeting. Each citizen will be allotted a maximum of three minutes to present their comments. Comments are to be within the purview of the municipal government directive. Comments are directed to the whole of council, not individual counselors or staff. Questions to be directed to council via written correspondence at the public comments session is not intended to be a question-and-answer between members in the public of council, to the members of public and council. Rather, it is an opportunity for a community member to voice their position on an issue of interest to the municipal government. So what I did this time, it was also stated in here is to the public comments session be determined by the chair, which is me. So this is only my first trial run. It very well could change. So what I did is I put a comment sheet out at the door to see if someone who wanted to sign up. On here, we have two people. The first one would be Greg Muse, and the second one would be Linda Mullen. You each have three minutes. So Greg, the microphone's on.
Is it?
This is actually, before I start, I'm not going to start the timer until you start speaking, but actually Greg was one of the first ones that brought this forward, and I do believe that was in September of last year. So Greg, you had asked, there was also another community member that asked. Here we go. You're the first person. You have the floor, Greg.
And, and thank you, counsel. Thank you for approving that agenda. And that was, that's to prevent confusion, because when we, as a, as a group in, in the audience, look at what council is doing, we say, "What just happened?" Or, "What was that?" And we don't, we could, we, we would like, at some point, if this goes well, if, if the council finds that it's a benefit, that we can be asking a question, not to be answered immediately, because people have to ponder on questions. If you ask me, if the council asks me a question, I'm going to have to ponder on that question. The reason, if I, if I tell you the wrong information, it's on me, and I don't want it to be on me. But I'd like to thank you for giving us this opportunity. But an opportunity like this does not work unless everybody, even though there's discontent with the motion that was made, if everybody leans into this and looks at it as a positive, not a negative, it will become a positive, because there's a lot of wisdom behind it. There's a lot of people with different backgrounds, different lifestyles. In, in my case, I've wore a lot of different hats. I'm going to refer to a, a statement that was said earlier. I've got a degree in fisheries and wildlife biology. Technically, I should be a biologist, but I'm not, because I never worked in. I had to find another field of work. So I understand the librarians, what they go through, what they have to go through to pay for their, their university. Now, I, I had researched a little bit to find out about the question-and-answer, because in the past, we had, we've been to council and stopped because we could not make a comment, we could not ask a question, we could not understand what council was doing. So we stopped going to council for those reasons, because it, it was too confusing, too frustrating. But us being able to express ourselves will change that. And by counselors, we, the people of the public, are open to anybody stepping over to us and asking us questions, why, why do I say, do you say that? Or why do you, do you have that comment?
Wrap it up.
Wrap it up?
Yep. Three minutes was quick.
It's too quick. But lean into it, be open to people from the public to ask questions and have a discussion, because it clarifies things. Claire and, and Argal both enjoy the fact that they have people come, and they, you can ask a question, and they'll answer the question. And if they, they'll defer it if they can't answer it. Thanks again, and may God bless you.
Thank you very much, Greg. And if you may have noticed, council's very intuitive and paid a lot of attention to what you had just said.
One of these days, I'm going to go pay a hire.
You go around, check microphones, microphones.
Desk one, two.
Check, check, check.
Look at the dust.
I'll just keep it like that. Check, check.
Trevor, Patty, try your mics.
Come on, I gotta get him to go. Hello?
Yep.
And just an FYI about the sea lamp rise, according to NOAA, we're all familiar with NOAA, the global mean sea lamp rise per year is one decimal four million meters. So I think we have time to move on. It's very.
Thank you very much, Laurie. Is there anyone else who wants to come up and say your name and where you're from? Michelle, did you ask her? Thanks.
I also like the spring.
Touchy. There, that better, John?
Yep. Try it one more time. Lauren, you're good.
Yeah, I'm good.
Yeah, you're good now.
Doing the mining.
All right, I'm going to ask everyone, before we get started, turn off ringers and dingers and these things.
Number one, that is a provincial issue. The only time it would ever come before council is in regards to development of buildings. That comes to the actual thinking that we're going to have, that the provincial, that there'd be absolutely nothing new that might knowledge.
I just want to ask you.
The best thing I can suggest to see us, G M L, is that we have.
All right, Mike, whenever you're ready, give me a thumbs up, we'll get this show on
the road.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to be able to speak. One of the concerns that I have with the ruling is that it all.
All right. Like to call this committee of the whole meeting to order. Today is Thursday, February the 8th of 2024. I'll start off by the Atlantic acknowledgement. I'd like to begin by acknowledging that we are meeting on the traditional lands of Acacia First Nation, Karka M'Gagi, the ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people. Item number three, additions or deletions to the agenda is circulated. Is there any additions? If not, then entertain a motion to approve the agenda circulated. Moved by Counselor Daniel Allen, you have a second or? Seconded by Counselor Sherry Hurlberg. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item five, if there's any declarations of conflict interest, please notify me, and I'll make sure that your name is recorded. Item number six, presentations. We have with us today, I believe it's Aaron Camo, from the Western Counties Regional Library. So I'm going to ask you to hit the red button on your microphone. I'll turn your mic on. You may get started.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, so I can't hear myself. I woke up this morning with a, an ear that's blocked, so I do apologize if I speak too loudly.